And welcome to the September tenth, two thousand and twenty five Southwestern Board of Directors Planning Meeting. It is six thirty one P M. And I would like to call this meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the Southwestern School District. We are grateful for all in attendance and those watching at home. Prior to this meeting, the board met for an executive session. During this executive session, we discussed personnel matters. Out of respect for all in attendance this evening, please take a moment to silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. At this time, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence for the violence in America today?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Furman, when you're ready, attendance, please.
Mrs. Bauer.
Here.
Mr. Beard.
Here.
Mrs. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Galizella.
Here.
Mr. Gelsinger.
Here.
Mr. Leydi.
Here.
Mr. Plessack.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Weaver.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you. I apologize. I have a hundred pieces of paper in front of me, but none of them were the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda this evening? We'd like to thank all the visitors in attendance this evening. If you have signed in, your name will be recorded for the meeting minutes. You will have two opportunities to speak during our meeting. The first opportunity will be to address any agenda-related items. This opportunity will fall at the end of the meeting where you will have the opportunity to address the board again.
Ready for the rest of the meeting. All right. Good evening, everyone. And I thought I would come up here to just say we are so happy to have with us today several of our brand-new professional faculty. As you know, Southwestern is perhaps the premier and lead school district in the state. And so we are privileged to have and welcome these fine folks who are in the front row. I'm going to introduce them in just a minute. We have a very nice process to bring students. Some of them could be my students from years ago, but we are not talking about that right now. I'm so glad to have them as our teachers. I get my job. One of the things I get a chance to do is to work with all of our new teachers. I oversee our induction program. And whether they will admit it or not, they get to spend a lot of time with me over the course of this year. And so I'm privileged to be able to introduce them to the board right now. So we had twenty-one new staff members coming to the district. Not all twenty-one could be here today, but the ones that are here, I'm going to be happy to recognize right now. So we have, well, first of all, we have Carlin Freo. Carlin Freo is autistic. Yep, please come on up if you don't mind. Carlin Freo is teaching autistic support at Park Hills Elementary School. We have Julie Frank. Come on up. Formerly Julie Grab, but now Julie Frank. Julie Frank is teaching second grade at Park Hills as well. We have Amanda Hoff. On up. Amanda Hoff is one of our district's social worker, student services coordinator. I think I said that right, Amanda. Did I get the right order of that title? She works with our elementary, and she does an excellent job of really helping to coordinate a lot of services and provide a lot of good supports for our students and our families. So Amanda, welcome. Bryce Mackey. We have a couple of bubble classes at Park Hills, and Bryce is actually in a second-grade class this year. We are glad to have him as a part of Park Hills team. Emma Meyer. Emma Meyer is currently teaching kindergarten at Bearsville, and I understand recently engaged. Congratulations for that. Elise Schultz. Elise Schultz is a fourth-grade teacher at West Mannheim Elementary School. Shawna Stotler. Shawna is teaching autistic support at Bearsville Elementary School. And Madison Zier. Did I pronounce that right? Zier. Madison Zier. I was afraid of that. Madison is teaching learning support at the high school, I believe in the math, right, as well. So we are very pleased to have these fine new faculty members join us, and we appreciate it. And there was a miscommunication. There was supposed to be some refreshment for them. It was not there, but I told them at our first year-one induction meeting, I'll make sure that we have fine refreshments, that we will make that a wonderful time. Thank you all for coming, and thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you all for coming this evening. It is not a requirement that you stay for the remainder of the meeting. We all know you have classrooms to prep for tomorrow. If you would like to stay, we would love your company, but it is not a requirement. Go home to the things you need to do. This brings us to number eight, Dr. Jeffrey Schmal, PAYS survey.
I promise this will be quick, as I was coming here. I think this will be something that even our old friend Jeff Mommer would be proud of, because any time I presented, he said to make sure it was just a few minutes. So I assure you, this will be a fairly quick presentation. So the PAYS survey, it's called the PAYS. It stands for Pennsylvania Youth Survey. It's a survey that we have given in the state of Pennsylvania for a number of years. It started in the nineties. And it's given online, and it's given biannually, every two years, to students in grades six, eight, ten, and twelve. This year, there was an opportunity to include fourth graders. It was an additional testing test, but not a test, excuse me, a survey. But as we discussed it, administrated, we felt we would maintain the test, I keep referring to test, the survey for sixth through twelfth grade, considering the fourth graders are still relatively young students. The survey gathers student information on behaviors, attitudes, and knowledge related to drugs and alcohol, tobacco, violence and delinquency, mental health. It also assesses the factors in the community, risk factors and protective factors, such as their involvement in schools. And then we get that information. The information also is shared with community members in the county and state, and we use that. That information is used by local agencies and state agencies to guide prevention and intervention programs locally, but also throughout the state. The survey is given online. It used to be given in, it used to be a booklet that we handed out, and there was a lot of logistics and legwork that we put into that. It's now much easier. We simply give a link out to our kids at the middle school and also in the high school, and they take it. It's completely confidential. We do send home a passive permission form that we send out to all of our families. By passive permission, we mean the parents turn the form in if they don't want their children to participate. Children themselves, on the day of testing, also have the ability to say, I do not want to take this survey, or they also have the ability to not answer any questions that they don't know anything about or just do not feel comfortable answering. So the plan for us would be to send the passive permission form out sometime later next week, and then the first day for administering the survey would be October first. We would administer it to our sixth and eighth grades, grade students on that day during their intervention period. And then the high school, we are actually planning to bring the high school students over to the middle school because of the renovation, just to ensure that we have enough internet access, and we were planning to give that on October tenth, which is actually one of our early release days. So the tenth and the twelfth graders would come over on that day. I believe the twelfth graders would go into the auditorium, and the tenth graders will go into the cafeteria, and they'll take the survey there, and then we'll send them back over to the high school for the remainder of the day. Okay? So just wanted to share that information with you and see if there are any questions that any of you had regarding the PAYS survey.
Yes, sir.
So a couple. I'll try to ask them all at one time, and I'm sure you can answer it very quickly. First question, there's been a lot of speculation in the past. Can this information be, the data be connected back to the individual student after the surveys are completed?
It cannot. It's a complete unit. It's completely confidential and unanimous.
How long does the survey take for the students to take, and what do the students do that are opted out of the survey?
So that's a good question. As far as the length of the survey, it typically takes, Mr. Gelsinger, about thirty minutes or so. We do have a few students who take a little bit longer, but typically at the most, it's about forty-five minutes. And in regards to what other students do, I don't want to speak for administration, but in the past, what we would typically do is kids who, the kids whose parents opted them out, so to speak. I recall one year, we let the kids go outside, and they had some, a little bit of additional time to, of activities outside. We've also moved them in some occasions into different classrooms, because there are times that we did it a little bit later in the school year, into November, early December, and we would just move them to a different classroom, and they would just do some light activities in the classroom.
I think the biggest thing is people need to understand, because in the past, when I did research on this, there was a lot of confusion, that the data could be actually traced back to an individual kid if they completed certain questions. So, and you're saying that's not true.
That is not correct.
So I, in the past, I asked, kind of drilled in on that very question, and I think the response was a little bit more nuanced than that. While it can be tracked back to the individual student, if a student self-identifies being suicidal or the subject of domestic abuse, what they would do is re-approach the class to see if they could ident, have the student come forward. Is that the case, or?
So I have never heard of a situation like that, and I'm not sure how that information, how we would be able to delineate individually who took a specific survey.
I guess my question was to follow up. If someone does that.
The follow-up for?
Yep.
Matt, I believe that was the screener.
Yeah.
Which is not the PAYS.
Yes, that's something completely different. That was a pilot, that was a pilot program that we did.
Okay, maybe I'm completing.
Yes. Yes.
But the questions on both were similar, so that would make sense why you might have that.
Now, I will share, so we will get a report. So we, as right now, Dr. Burkhart will get one, and I will get one, and we will review it, and it'll have all of our local information in for our school, and it'll compare our information to the county level and also to the state level. So it'll be sort of three tiers of that. It'll show our information and then compare it again to the county, your county, and also to the state.
Right. So to clarify, from my understanding, then, this is a way to gauge what's occurring at our district level and to report that, not necessarily to respond to any crisis that a child may have. This is just for a snapshot of where we're at.
That's correct.
And the only other question I have in regards to this is, I was recently going over policies related to policy committee, and Dr. Dalton, I'm going to put you on the spot here, because you're really good at on-the-spot recall.
Two thirty-five.
There's a, well, maybe you're reading my mind, but there's a prohibition against asking invasive questions. Is that two thirty-five?
Policy two thirty-five relates generally to any federal, state, or locally administered survey. So it does talk about the types of surveys that cannot be administered, and so I.
So my question is, so long as it stays voluntary, that's really the important limit test, is so long as it stays voluntary, we're not violating that policy?
Correct. And even within that policy, like, that's the testing on human subjects, like medical invasionary, whereas this is more people's opinions and expressions. But that policy does incorporate both of those limitations, and this would not be something that would be prohibited by that policy or by law. Because it's voluntary, but also it doesn't meet some of those like human research problems.
So long as we're on a voluntary basis, then we're not in contravention of our policy.
Yes. And again, parents do have the ability to opt out their children from taking the survey, and kids, while they're taking the survey, can indicate, I don't want to take it, or I don't want to answer these specific questions, because they make me uncomfortable, or I don't know anything about those, whatever the questions would be. The other thing that I forgot to mention, that I put on the memo that I handed out, is, and when the parent, the passive permission form goes home, there is a link there where parents can actually request to get access to what some of the questions are on the survey as well, so.
This is an opt-out letter, correct? So if a kid never takes the letter home, and the parent never sees it, they're taking the survey?
They, so, yes, so it is a passive permission. So if the parents do not sign.
Is there any way we can communicate with the families? They can expect this letter to come home?
Yes. So our plan, our plan was actually to send it out on, send it out through Sapphire, like we would send out, we're going to send it out electronically.
I'm not a fan of opt-out letters. I'm a fan of opt-in letters, or at least to ensure that we are notifying the families, expect this letter. That way, if you do want to research and opt out, the letter can come, because if we, if the child doesn't take the letter home and the parent never sees it, they didn't really truly have the option to opt their child out of it.
Right.
That's the only problem I ever have with opting out of anything.
Right. Understood. And we will send it home through Sapphire, similar to the emergency cards went home, so all parents, so we, so you kind of remove that ability of a kid to lose it to go home, so that it will show up in the parent's email as sort of, there's information for you. And to your point, Mr. Gelsinger, we can, we will make sure that we send home second and third reminders, so we do get as true of an indicator as we can that parents had an opportunity to go on and view it, and if they want to see the questions before making a decision, they can click on the link to do that as well.
Since they were asking about opt-out, has that always been that way?
It has, yes.
Oh, okay. Because I graduated, I graduated twenty-one years ago. I don't ever remember this.
Yes. So that, so the unique, that is correct. If you're in the off grade, you'll never take it, because it's every two years. So sixth grade will take it, it's eighth graders, and then, so the grade that takes it, so they continue to take it year after year, if that makes sense. That's just the way it's been administered.
That's possible that I never took it.
And what that allows is for you to go back and look at how data has changed from year to year. You can look at last year's eighth-grade cohort, or two years ago's eighth-grade cohort, and see how the numbers look different to when they're in a tenth-grade cohort.
Good to know.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Dr. Schmal? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
This brings us to number nine, hearing of persons who wish to address the board. I have two that have signed in, one who has asked to speak at the beginning on an agenda-related item, Mr. Stephen Carr in reference to Navigate three sixty.
So I did it, first, I'm township, Stephen Carr. So I did it first this way, because by the time at the end, you all beat the vote. So hopefully, it'll be a little bit changing in the vote. So first of all, if this PBIS for Navigate three sixty has been going on for twelve years, why now has it just been discussed with the board? Second, why do I agree, why I do agree with Director Brennan that there are positive things about SEL and helping children's behavior and parents helping the positivity at home, there are other sides to that as well that are harmful. Three, have you considered that SEL is damaging to students with special needs and gifted students? Students with autism and gifted students, for example, might start out with problematic behavior in school but make great gains. Four, how will learning difficulties for students with disabilities be reflected in the assessments? Have you considered that mental health side of SEL? SEL is about specifically monitoring the emotional behavior of all children. If teachers focus on abundance of data on every child, they might miss or have little time to address the child who really has problems. Six, have you considered that SEL and the way of watching children's behavior and regulation could be undermining their ability to parent their kid? Most parents teach their kids well when it comes to behavior. Children come to school eager and ready to learn. Why I do fully agree, or fully support the PBS system, I am in full agreement with Director Gelsinger, that the board needs to fully vet and sift through the curriculum courses before passing this part of the program, which is referring to the compas student. And yes, dozen I E Ps and functional plans have three-tier intervention stage known as the research-based intervention, where there is three stages, class-wide intervention and small group intervention and individual intervention, that is in reply to Mr. Galizella, Dr. Galizella from the I E Ps. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board on an agenda-related item before we move forward this evening? Okay. Seeing no one rising. Number ten, matters for which board action is required. Personnel Committee, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I'm making a motion to approve ten A, one through six.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Smith and a second from Mr. Leydi. Any questions in reference to any of the personnel items this evening? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bauer.
Yes.
Mr. Beard.
Yes.
Mrs. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Gelsinger. Mr. Gelsinger. Mr. Galizella.
Yes.
Mr. Leydi.
Yes.
Mr. Plessack.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Weaver.
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
And there are no resignations on here. If there were, they would be noted in the minutes.
Thank you, sir. Finance and Support Services Committee, Mrs. Bauer.
I don't think I've ever gotten to say this, but I have no report.
I still have to call on you. It's nice to hear your voice. Program Committee, Mr. Beard.
Thank you. Under the Program Committee, there are three separate items, all dealing with the Navigate three sixty pilot that was proposed for West Mannheim. I think it best that we do these individually, and so I'll make a motion to consider, number one, the recommendation to approve the pilot program of Navigate three sixty, specifically the PBIS rewards part.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Beard and a second from Mr. Leydi for C one.
Ten, C one.
I'm sorry, ten, C one. Thank you, sir.
So I'd like to start off by clarifying PBIS and PBIS rewards for our viewers. When West Mannheim says that they've been doing PBIS for twelve years, that is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports in many different forms. For instance, our STAR programs, last year, they implemented Mustang Dollars, which were physical dollars. PBIS rewards, specifically from Navigate three sixty, is an application that you, parents, teachers, can get on their phone in order to track the Mustang Dollars digitally, and this would be the first year we would be implementing this.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Yes, sir.
This comment really applies to all three. I would like to give a thank you to Mr. Kump and his staff at West Mannheim for taking the time to look for a better tool, taking the time to consider this particular tool and the initiative, you know, to propose the pilot program. I think it's a bit unfortunate that we have had this hiccup, and we're discussing it now in September, but I do think that it's really positive that Mr. Kump and his staff at West Mannheim, and I know that Ms. Nederer and Park Hills were considering it as well. So I think it's a testament to you and your staff that you're always looking to either invent a better mousetrap or maybe buy a mousetrap that's already built that's better. So I'd like to compliment you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Furman, would you scroll the agenda for me when you get a second?
Oh, I didn't know you could do that. Oh.
No worries. I just wanted to circle back on the conversation related to privacy and security. That was really the only concern I had in reading all the content. I didn't really truly have any concerns myself. I just wanted to know if there were any other conversations had as a follow-up to the other night related to policy of security, cybersecurity with the app.
In terms of the, making sure it applies with our applicable use, not at this point, no, we haven't had that chance.
Okay.
But we will, I mean, obviously, if we see it to be in conflict, we would make sure that it's in alignment with ours, but I can speak with Dr. Dalton about the.
Thank you.
Briefly, again, I've been on this for quite some time. The discipline and behavioral piece of attendance here in the district is really important. When behavior falls apart, so does education. I firmly believe that. So having additional tools like PBIS and behavioral intervention is paramount. I am very happy that we have additional tools that teachers will be able to use and implement in both a positive, intermittent positive reinforcement way, as well as an intervention when there are problems. I think that's a huge piece. Anytime we can develop more on that, it's a big leg up for the district. So I'm very appreciative of that part of this.
So, go right ahead. So to piggyback off of what I said the other night, and I'm not sure if the community as a whole, or if you watched the meeting the other night, but I clearly want to emphasize again that while SEL was, I will not use the word that was used all these years, but was, I like to use the word, put in this umbrella that was not so positive. It's my nice way of saying it. So we have this stereotype of what it is, because we went through so many years of what it wasn't. SEL was not meant to be that. It turned into that, but it was never meant to be that. What it was meant to be is what we saw in that, in that program. To the point of autism and disabilities, as far as Navigate three sixty and the, and the various points that have been brought up, this is not going to be a negative impact on kids with disabilities or kids with autism. Ninety-nine percent of the families I work with have our kids on the spectrum, almost all of them. So I'm very familiar with the autism spectrum, and I still firmly believe that this program will be beneficial. SEL, again, the umbrella that it should be, not the one that we knew that it wasn't, and it was made to be that way from many years ago, and what society had turned it into. But what it should be is, kids on the spectrum and kids with disabilities still have to learn and have to be successful in social interaction. Some struggle with that. Some with certain disabilities do struggle with social interaction and regulation. So they need more help, more services, more assistance with that, which this will do in probably a more simplistic way. So I don't think that just because someone's on the spectrum or has disabilities are going to be negatively impacted by such a program. But it will be especially beneficial to the kids that need it, more so than not. I don't really think, other than some of the topics that we know is in those lessons that we would like to pull, as Mr. Kump said, we could. Much of the topics, lessons, curriculum, weeks, we want to call them, they were important for kids. I'd venture to say I think parents should look at this curriculum for themselves, not just the kids. should look at this curriculum for themselves, not just the kids. So that's where I'm at. Nothing that changes. I'm not saying anything different than what I did the other night, and I still stand by what I said the other night.
Just for clarification, we're only discussing PBIS rewards right now.
Rewards.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Although I am going to say yes, but then ask a question that pertains to all three because why vote for one if we don't agree with the answer? Mr. Furman, this program, which is a pilot for the district, obvious, I'm sorry, a pilot for West Manheim, I apologize, comes at a cost to the district, which I would assume is less than the cost of purchasing it for the entirety of the district since it is a pilot. So for the bundle that we are engaging in for the pilot at West Manheim, what is the cost to the district?
The cost is $5,186.50.
And that is for the bundle that contains these three components that we are discussing this evening that we will utilize as a pilot at West Manheim. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because that might change people's minds as we go down this list. Okay.
Do we have an estimated cost for the district if we were to implement it?
That costs a lot of question. What is it costing if we expand the entire district?
It's a, from looking at the invoice at that Navigate 360 sentence for West Manheim, it's a per pupil cost, so it would be how many of our students we have in elementary levels, if that's what this program would go towards.
So they're estimating that at 550?
550 is what they're estimating it at, correct. So I would assume, if you think about Bearsville and Park Hills, around the same number of students.
So we're looking at about $40,000 for the district?
Well, if you're going for the entire district, if this is just an elementary program, it's, from my understanding, that's where we would look at this for. It would be...
$21,000.
Correct, right around there.
Thank you.
And they do have the invoice broken out by the different, the three different levels that are here, items that we're voting on tonight. So the PBIS rewards in itself is $1,837. So that's a separate amount. And then they have a Compass student as $1,001,4950, and then the behavioral, Compass behavioral, they have two amounts there, $1,760 and $440. So they do have it broken out by the three components as we have on the agenda tonight.
Which would be beneficial if down the road we find that we like certain aspects of the program and not others. Okay, wonderful.
Except, Mr. Kump, I do believe that they came as a package deal. They were a discount to buy all three. That discount is just reflected and broken down.
Yeah, so the PBS rewards program would be a very similar cost to what Mr. Furman mentioned. To piece out the social-emotional learning part and the behavior intervention part, they shared that it would have cost more to buy just the behavior intervention than to buy the bundle if we wouldn't have bought the social-emotional learning lessons.
Interesting. Okay. Did they give you any idea that there'd be any discounts for additional schools?
If it would be a district-level license, there would be a district-level price. I don't know what that price is because that's not what we discussed. Talking with Mr. Shield, he was confident that he would be able to get a reduced price as well.
Mr. Lighty, just for, typically when you do purchase a bigger volume, they will tend to give you a discount. So I don't, I don't think we can say what that is, but to your point, it would probably be something over what we already have.
Okay. Roll call vote, please, for 10C1.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mrs. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gelsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Galizella?
Yes.
Mr. Lady?
Yes.
Mr. Plessack?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Weaver?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Next is number 10C, number two, recommendation to approve the pilot program at West Manheim for the Compass behavioral intervention.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Beard and a second from Mr. Smith for 10C2. Opening the floor for conversation.
The one thing I did want to highlight is I take the word pilot very seriously, and so I look at this as a proof of concept. I spent quite a bit of time reviewing a lot of the content that was made available to me, one of which was the curriculum specific to bullying. So I very much want to know what data comes out of this proof of concept with this pilot, specifically when it comes to behaviors such as that.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, sir.
So in looking at the behavioral intervention, I think Mr. Gelsinger put it very aptly. This almost runs a parallel to the diversionary program that we're developing here. I see them as possibly tying together even. Have you considered that, Dr. Burkhardt, as far as this pilot with our diversionary pieces?
Well, the diversionary piece is more aimed at the middle high school.
Yeah.
However, I would see it working or dovetailing quite nicely should we have to implement it at the, at the elementary level. So yes.
Okay.
But because this isn't the middle school, high school, this could be a future expansion into that. That would be specific to that type of incident. So, yeah.
Right. And, and I've pushed vociferously for developing some type of diversionary programs that we, as a board, have an option to go to besides just a straight expulsion. There are some kids that make a singular mistake, and having a behavioral intervention piece really serves in that role. And having that at the lower level is just as important, I think.
Thank you, sir.
One question. Can the behavioral program be done without the student program? And would you, as a principal, choose to do one without the other?
They definitely could function without one another. So we could do the behavior intervention lessons without the social-emotional learning component. We could do the social-emotional learning component without the behavioral lessons. Absolutely, whichever way the board goes, we will, I would support that.
You got any other comment I will make? Because I did spend quite a bit of time on a Zoom meeting with the people from Navigate 360, who was very nice to spend that much time with me. The intervention classes that are on there, if you didn't notice, are all grade bonded. So that is one concern I have. So it's the exact same intervention class for a kindergartner as it is for a second grader. It's the exact same intervention from a third grader to a fifth grader. So my concern a little bit is the difference in education and the difference of attention of those grades.
Yeah. And if, if we're giving these tier one, two, and three lessons that are geared towards those specific behaviors, and we're continuing to see them across grade levels with the same child, we have to figure something else out. We have to put other interventions in place. We should be doing functional behavior analysis, and we should be talking about positive behavior support plans and possibly IEPs. So certainly, this would be one level of intervention that we could provide. We still have a whole lot of other tools in our tool belt that we would be able to use to intervene with behaviors if these are not effective.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's a good, when you were talking about the diversionary program, I think this would be a, I don't want to say simplistic way of potentially bringing in something like that to help kids that are emotionally and mentally developing still with those behaviors and such, that may lead to that kind of behavior in middle and high school that gets them expelled. But they, this might prevent them in the onset because we're doing this with them at such a young age, at a younger age, I should say. So because they're going through this from K through fifth, and some may just do it through fifth because they start later, it will help them already on the onset so that by the time they get to middle and high school, they might not be doing the things that could get them expelled. So in that respect, it's like a diversionary program, but with a lot of other things going on that helps with that positive reinforcement. But that behavior intervention part also will help too. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So in watching some of the videos and going through some of the curriculum for the behavioral intervention, there were, for the most part, it is very age-appropriate, simplistic for our students that, to understand. One of my concerns was that if we have behaviors, it's a 10-minute video going to address that behavior. And in your presentation, you said that there would be a person going through it with them. So I want to ensure that, for me, that face-to-face instruction is going to be the most important part. So I recognize that the videos are good. I also alluded to the restorative practices at the end, filling out the paperwork, acknowledging what they did wrong as part of the program, and that they will need adults to lead them through that. So because of that, I'm supportive of this program. There are a few items in there that I don't fully agree with, but being that I think that there are underheadings that I don't know that we'll address too much. I don't think that that will see them, and because it's not for the entire school, it's going to be selective for, for individuals that need that instruction. I am supportive of this program.
Thank you, sir. All good? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gelsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Galizella?
Yes.
Mr. Lady?
Yes.
Mr. Plessack?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mrs. Weaver?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Next, number 10C, number three, recommendation to approve the pilot program at West Manheim to include the Compass student.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Beard and a second from Mr. Smith. Floor is open for 10C3.
So just as I said with the prior comments, I would say out of all three, this is the one that I have the greatest concern with, but I genuinely watched many of the videos, and it's not the content of the videos, it's the value of the videos as it pertains to the money. And when I think about the budget and deficits and where money is allocated, that's where I take issue. But again, going back to my prior statement of a pilot and a proof of concept, with everyone seemingly the other night being extremely data-driven, that gives me pause, and I want to better understand the value that is obtained, not just perceived. And so that being said, I watched many of the videos, some of the ones that seemed like they would be more questionable from a content perspective, and I did not find a lot of things from an argument perspective that were concerning to me.
I also got the opportunity to go through much of the curriculum, certainly not all of the curriculum because it is extensive. And I think what I also found very valuable were the attached PDFs that then could go with the lesson. And I think that as parents, being able to reiterate what your child is consuming in the classroom sometimes can't simply be left to, what did you learn in school today? So I found them to be succinct, informative, and it helped me to understand from the point of view of what my child was learning that day, potentially, although I do not have children at West Manheim, the value to, to the lesson and the video that was prior to it. So I, I hear and understand the concerns that were brought up the other evening, and I watched what I thought might be, for lack of better words, trigger warning videos. I did not find them to be that, but I also think with the backup of something sent home with the families, it will help to have our families understand exactly what their students were learning versus just saying, I watched a video today called Trouble on the Playground. And then them going, what's the trouble on the playground? So I, I found that to be very valuable. And I, I do want to thank Mr. Gelsinger as he helped to facilitate getting that information to me. So it was, it was nice to be able to thumb through all of that. So I do appreciate that.
I do want to piggyback off that, and I also appreciate the, the potential of the handouts or worksheets and stuff like that, and the ability that the parents can go through that because it's a tangible kind of item. Sometimes, parents and kids don't see the benefit when there's nothing tangible there. And that is a tangible item. While it might be just a worksheet or a piece of paper with things that they can answer, it's still very informative and helpful for the parents and the kids, especially for kids that are more kinesthetic learners. Again, I'll just continue to reiterate, I feel like it's helpful to implement this with the other. And I don't find anything concerning unless it were to come up to be concerning and which it can be removed if needed. So, thank you. Mr. Beard?
Mr. Kump, could you refresh my memory? Will, would parents have access to the courses? Like as an example, if we're in Week 10, would, will the parents of the students have any access to those?
Yeah. So I did not send home the scope and sequences with all of the children in the school when we sent the permission slip home. That is something that I'm absolutely open to providing access to all, the scope and sequences to all parents. Like that, that is completely an option. I can share them via email to make sure that they all get them. We can put it on our campus pages somewhere so that it's accessible, so that each parent has that easy at their fingertips to be able to review and make sure that they're aware of those lessons. I don't see any harm in that or any barrier to that.
For myself, I, I can see the potential value of the Compass student. However, I'm concerned that, you know, we, we have a normal process of kind of reviewing curriculum, and that if we break that, you know, it could cause problems later. My own life experience, not with curriculum, but with other things, when you have a process and then you try to shortcut it, you end up with a mess at the end. So what I would like to suggest is that, for this particular aspect, that we funnel it through our normal curriculum review process, so that it can have due consideration, and that if the board approves it or does not, or if there's a selective approval, that, you know, we've, we've kind of done our diligence on it. And that, that's my greatest concern is approving something, starting to use it without having done our diligence.
I'll do it real quick.
So a couple notes, again, during the Zoom meeting with the representatives. One of the big things that I brought up during the last board meeting was Castle. I know it was quoted in here, just for everybody's awareness. The Curriculum Queen, as they called this lady, it was on the Zoom meeting with me. I told her I would quote that. Apparently, Castle is the only nationally recognized program. That does not mean that Navigate 360 believes in their ideology. That was quoted from them. So take that, read into it as you will. The other thing that she stated during our meeting was they have supposedly reviewed all of the material on their Navigate 360 and ensured that it has aligned with the new executive orders. I have not, there were a couple of lessons that I personally have not had a chance to review. I still have a concern that, there's no nice way to say it. It seems like this is being very secretly hidden from our parents. So I appreciate the fact that you're willing to send the scope and sequence out, but when I'm told even from the higher-ups of the company that they do not want our parents to see the lessons ahead of time because it could impact the data that is collected during the lesson, I have a serious concern with that. So, again, there is still a couple of questionable lessons that I have a concern about. So my question with you is, if we approve this curriculum, because no matter what we said last Monday, everybody, including the Curriculum Queen, refers to this as a curriculum. So if we approve this tonight, would we potentially be stuck in a situation where we've been told before that if we try to remove a lesson, that we're going to be told the old curriculum is approved until it gets reviewed again?
Absolutely not, because we do not have approved written curriculum for social-emotional learning. So if you decide to remove a lesson, there's not... So if you decide to remove a lesson, there's not prior approved written curriculum to go back on to teach. So we would remove that lesson.
So if we do approve this tonight and there's still a couple questionable lessons that I have not had the chance to review because they were not made readily available and I just didn't have time today, I'm not going to lie. So I think some of my other board members did have time to read some of them that were of concern. So if anybody wants to chime in on just those, if there are one or two that we have concern about now or next week, how could we address them with you directly? Would you prefer to have a meeting? Would you prefer to have a committee meeting of curriculum? Like what would be the course of action for us to remove something?
I would defer to Dr. Burkhard on that because I, just that it being a more of a district level practice.
Right. I think, I think if an individual board member has an issue with a topic, they can address it with Mr. Kump. However, I don't know that that necessarily means that's the will of the board. What I will say is that it is very clear to Mr. Kump, myself, administrators and teachers, where the, the variations of what we would consider acceptable by a board and not acceptable by the board for delivery of instruction would be adhered to. And I would suggest that and recommend that if anyone had an individual lesson, contact him because I would suspect that that's probably one that he was going to not include anyway. But if, if formal action, because you're not a, I know you're adopting this, the, the program, but not necessarily to your point, Mr. Kump, the curriculum. I would suspect you have great latitude in just removing a lesson, especially when.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the way I understood the curriculum queen is, and again, just for everybody's knowledge, if there is a issue with any lesson, you have the authority to go in and hit remove and nobody can even see that lesson, including teachers, kids, everybody.
That is correct.
That literally disappears in the cyber space.
Yeah. And, and individual board members, please don't hesitate to email me. Like I'm happy to, to communicate through email, to, to schedule a meeting where we can sit down and have conversations about your concerns if there are any. Um, I just, if there's something like that we would formally be removing, then I would want it to be a, a collective of the whole. Uh, but those individual conversations, I'm happy to have.
Now, as far as the scope and sequence, the way I understand it is they chose the scope and sequence. So they went through and did the X amount of weeks and recommended that to you.
Yes.
You have the authority to go in and say, or have you gone in and looked at those 40 X odd weeks and said, these all align with our beliefs, this is what we're going to do?
So because we were piloting the resource, we were going to use their scope and sequence. Always like before we do full implementation and, and put something into practice, then we look at it at, from the southwestern way. So is that the, the most effective scope and sequence? Do, are there things that we want to remove? Uh, so at this time, we weren't planning on removing lessons, but certainly very, looking very closely at the ones that you've raised concern about. Um, and then we weren't changing ones, changing the order, but that is something that we would always have discussions with our teachers. Is it what's best for kids? Should we change it up? Should we teach in a different order?
And then the only other request or question would be if a parent has an issue with a specific lesson, would you potentially handle that similar to a book review, if you will, where we can get other administrators involved and review that, make sure that's each appropriate, brief the board on it, all of those things?
I, I'm open to that process. I don't know. Uh, we don't have anything that I know of in written practice right now, but I.
It's private.
Yeah, exactly. So, and I'm open to if a parent reaches out and says, I'm okay with this curriculum except for this lesson. Okay, let's figure out how to make that work for your child so they can access the majority of the curriculum.
Because my vote tonight is very dependent on the fact that you said you're willing to notify the parents of the scope and sequence and you're willing to remove classes or lessons without a lot of hoops to jump through if they don't align with our beliefs.
Yes, absolutely.
I have a question on this real quick. I believe I'm drawing a distinction that's being blurred here. This particular program, as far as social emotional learning, correct me if I'm wrong, that is what they call their curriculum. This is completely different than curriculum that has plans written from it, like for English or math or science or whatever. It's their program, their curriculum, so to speak. I don't believe that we are voting on curriculum that has to do with education. This is social emotional learning, behavior issues. Am I correct on that is a completely different?
Yes.
Like I, I hear curriculum and it's being used in the context of like math or science or English, where this is.
Yeah. And, and Dr. Krummer and I are talking about how can we create written curriculum maps the way we have for our other subject areas so that it can be a written curriculum? Um, so if we find that this isn't the resource to use, well then, what is the resource? And how can we continue to make sure that we are still teaching appropriate social emotional learning to our students? So this is something that we want to pilot as a resource. We on the backend do want to establish southwestern curriculum that would be board-approved.
Right. I just wanted to make sure I was drawing that correct distinction that this is not the same as approving English or science curriculum. This is different.
We don't have the learning maps and things that go along with our regular.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was on the right wavelength there.
Yes, sir.
So that's a great lead-in. I appreciate that. In my mind, this absolutely is curriculum. When you define what curriculum is, that's setting goals and standards and developing. Thank you. Uh, he pulled up a definition, subjects comprising a course of study in a school or college. So it absolutely is curriculum in, in so much as it defines goals, establishes over teaching, even provides source materials. You, you, you can't have a better example of what curriculum is. So it absolutely is curriculum. We're, we're devoting a block of instruction with course materials, with a course of, of, of study. That is curriculum. That is our role to monitor and represent our district in what we should be teaching in our schools. So I disagree with you respectfully. Um, it absolutely is curriculum.
Wait, there is a policy on curriculum actually, policy 105, and it doesn't, it defines curriculum specific to educational goals and academic standards. And I think that's what the local and state, uh, standards are. And that's what, when they talk about mapping, is about incorporating whatever's being taught into what those local, state.
Educational standards?
Academic standards. Yeah, which are specific to chapter four, uh, in the regulations that lays out all the academic regulations.
Education goals, and that's actually how he justified the funding, is the goals of PBIS. So this does relate to education goal. I, I, I think debating what curriculum is tonight is, that's for another topic.
Yeah, if, if, I, I'd like to continue. I appreciate that distinction though, Dr. Dalton. Thank you. Again, SEL Castle comes from doctrine from the state. That's, that's where it's been developed. We do not have a curriculum developed here locally related to SEL. We've acknowledged that. In instituting new curriculum, new courses we teach in our classrooms, whatever you want to turn it, term it, whether it's a new course we're teaching or whether you call it curriculum, we are still instructing on something. We have processes set up. We have a director of curriculum specifically for designing what we teach in our schools. That is your main function, isn't it, Dr. Krummer? Right? Yes. So, so instead of invoking that to come up with a new course curriculum, we are piloting something that was delivered to us. So there's inherent, um, the reason we, one of the reasons we have curriculum is to have guide rails so that the curriculum is what this, this community wants taught in their schools. So this board has been phenomenal in vetting what has been presented to us. Mr. Gelsinger got logins, a couple of us have gone through volumes. I, I would venture, we've probably gone above where we should as a board for what we should be vetting as a curriculum. This should be vetted by our director of curriculum and then presented to us with the course, uh, content like we have in the past. Um, so that's where I think this should be coming from. We're back ending. I appreciate the earlier question in that twice now we've had something we didn't approve of, but it was in place and we were going to go forward with it until we found a replacement. So I'm very appreciative of the fact that we don't have to do that. That, that's one of my questions I had. In, in looking at this, as, as I saw, I had to, there are pieces. I'd like to first, I'll start by saying majority of this is good material. Okay? And if it came from a curriculum delivered to us, I'd be like, yep, yep, yep. But there are pieces in this that there's no way I can vote for and I would want them removed. And I'm sure there are going to be people that say we're going back to being book banners, but let, let me make the distinction right now. It's not in our schools right now. So we're not banning anything. It's not here. So I'm going to cut off that narrative right at, right at the knees. That being said, there is, th- this board is comprised of at least five members when they were being elected that swore traditional education, no DEI, no CRT. DEI stands for diversity, equity, inclusion. Much of what they're presenting in these teacher companion guides from Navigate 360 is specifically titled diversity, equity, and inclusion. Now, gratefully, they have been, uh, compiled into specific sections, 25, I'm sorry, 24 and 27 weeks. So that's where they sit. That's where that material, there's no way I'm going to advocate for it. And in fact, to that point, to Mr. Gelsom's early, early point, when he had the discussion at Zoom meeting, um, she misspoke because this is diversity, equity, inclusion, and there's LGBTQ at kindergarten level. My two mommies, my two daddies, what is a family? That family, that, that is exactly what's in there. So that's LGBTQ that some members of the community absolutely not want to, want their, their kids to learn. So we have both of those and bias training, which are federally prohibited by the current president. No DEI, no LGBTQ in our schools. So we run the risk of federal funding opposition if we go forward with this. So that's where I go in looking at this. The materials are there. Another red flag to me is they very, they were very upfront in delivering elementary level course materials. When you get to middle school and high school, there was a complete drop-off of, when you go to the teacher companions, not one resource was listed. There's not a single book. I ask, why were they so forthright with everything six down and then complete dearth from thereafter? And this is their course. I mean, it's, it, they've presented the entire course, coursework, it's searchable and they provide no course materials, middle school to high school. So minimally, there's no way I'm going to suggest we go forward with anything middle school or high school without seeing that curriculum. Again, this is curriculum. I would, I was on the fence on whether to go forward with, and, and in a way I still am, and I, that's why I value the discussion here, is whether we can accept this without the two pieces or whether I have to wonder, whether I have to continue to keep searching to find these things that are there and they're not surface level. Um, so where I wound up a, as a board member is we have a process, we have a curriculum. We should be, this, this compass course is a curricular material that should go through a normal process. I, I initially, I thought we could pilot and remove the two pieces, but as, the more I think of it, we have a process and I think we should be following that process and putting it through that process and saying, if we want to bring this forward, then develop a cri- a curriculum, whether you backward engineer it or not. And the second part of that, which is equally important, is make sure that curriculum, when it comes to this board, matches what the board approves of in our schools. And that's no DEI, no LGBTQ, no CRT, no social movements. We're doing traditional education here. And, and if, so long as we can abide to that, we can still teach behavioral, we can still teach social function. We can do that, but let's not insert the movements. That's, that's the crux of where I am. So I'm against this piece until we do it that way. By all means.
So the, um, my two mommies, my two daddies that you're referring to, is that in the additional literature resources after a lesson? Or is that in the core parts of the lesson? Because I'm not aware that that's in the core parts of the lesson, but I.
And, and I appreciate that call because that, that's what I'm saying. It's not surface level. When you go to the teacher companion guide for the course, My Family, which is kindergarten, the resource for students is A Family is a Family is a Family by Sarah O'Leary. When you pull that up and read it, in there, they talk specifically about my two mommies do this, my two daddies do that. And that is something that we will have parents calling on because it is, it is a hot debate, hotly debated topic. And that's, that's one of the examples that I see that would be caught in a curricular review. Um, and that's kind of where I, why I land there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to bring up another point. And Mr. Kump, I, I appreciate your flexibility in inviting, you know, nine different board members to talk with you about whatever their concerns might be. But with nine different board members, I could see that being problematic. Uh, once again, you know, we, we don't all think the same. That's why we have votes and the majority, you know, carries the day. So I would be concerned that different board members are talking to you about different courses, different concerns. I mean, that could become very time-consuming and very messy. Uh, and, and so that's, that's why I'm an advocate and I would just, for the public's benefit, the, the compass student is a different course each week for each grade level. And so, you know, K through five is six grades and it's 40 weeks. So we're really talking 240 different courses. Now granted, each of those courses is not, you know, a whole semester high school history class. But, uh, with 240 and nine different board members, I think it could get very messy. And that's why I'm an advocate for simply processing, putting this through the process, the normal curriculum process. I think that would be best. Uh, then there'd be a, a structured way to review it, a structured way to adjudicate questions or concerns and ultimately, you know, a vote of the entire board so that you and, and your staff then have definitive answers about, you know, what's going to be available to the students. And, uh, I, I just, I think it could be really messy if, if you become that middle person, that, that fulcrum, that adjudicator. I mean, that's, that doesn't sound like a good situation to me.
Thank you, sir. Can I just go left for one sec? Justin, did you have something? I, I thought it looked like you were ready to speak.
Yeah.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Sure. You want to go?
No, I'm good. But thank you.
So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back, uh, a little bit more basic than what we've been discussing. Uh, just for the, for the public to understand, um, where some of my concerns are in case they, they share them. I believe, well, let me start it this way. According to NIH, SEL classes were, was, was designed for students who have the inability to recognize and, um, and present emotional, because they have struggles generally due to, um, things in their life that were, uh, harmful. So they don't recognize certain emotions and behaviors like most of us do. My belief is that humans are instinctively designed to understand emotions. It's one of the first things we learn before we learn to talk, before we learn to walk. We are studying our parents and our caregivers for emotions and how to react. At four months old, if you look at your baby cross, like you're upset, they will cry because they have learned the emotions. Now that being said, I understand and I agree with probably 20% of our students are not in a position to get that from anyone or they've had experiences in their life that have shut those down. For that reason, I believe that this should have been a more focused class and should not have been directed towards the entire population of a school. When I asked you the other day what you thought percentage that needed this was, according to a survey done by the CDC that was just released in June of 25, 21% of three to 17-year-old, third, three-year-olds to 17-year-olds, um, experienced trouble with emotions or mental health. And that's actually broader because that was actually, uh, emotions, mental health, uh, and something else. Sorry.
something else. Sorry. Mental health, emotional, and behavioral conditions. So that's twenty-one percent, according to a recent study. Now that being said, well, and to go off of that, after reviewing many of these courses, I can tell you that I have children in every level of West Manheim, and they will not glean anything, similar to all of us taking e-learning courses at our work, at our job, that we just like to click through because we feel like it's a waste of time. The majority of our population of students will be suffering that same feeling that you get when you're like, oh, this thing again. My children will not learn from these courses, except for maybe the plagiarism one, because that's not something that we've discussed. Again, but do you need that in fifth grade? That being said, these courses are going to be added into a time period that's already set aside for something of an emotional, an S E L course. It's a meeting at the beginning of the day that you get to communicate with the teacher and discuss things that have gone on. And it's a small part of a meeting that is already taking place. And it's going to be once a week for approximately ten minutes. And so because of that, I do think that it's not a hindrance on the eighty percent of students that don't need it. And in a consideration of your comment the other night, even the students that don't necessarily need help with the S E L part of it, they're in an environment where they're dealing with children that do. And so this may help them recognize that. I still contend that our teachers, and this was brought up by Mrs. Brohardt, every day, every interaction in the hallway or in the classroom is a teachable moment. I think that's how the majority of people learn emotional stability and social emotional. They watch, they watch our teachers, and our teachers are amazing at representing how they should act in a society. So in my personal opinion, we are already doing the best job that we can with the majority of our students by, by setting the example in face-to-face situations. And there's, sitting in front of a computer taking a course is not going to be better than that. But again, the ability to track the issues that we have, the behavioral issues, and the limited scope of the program, I do think is justified. And as far as items that are in the program that are questionable, they're going to be hard to vet. It'll be very hard to vet. You know, there is some very small things interjected into some of these courses that are very benign for the most part. I was able to take some courses from the high school, and there's absolutely no way we're going to talk about microaggressions. But that was a twelfth grade course. For the kindergarten through fifth grade, really not anything alarming, but it's a slow roll. It's little, little things here and there. There was, for example, in the discrimination, there was a comment in there that people that you could discriminate against and how not to, that we need to respect the names that people need to use. Now depending on how you see that, that could go against a board policy that children need to be called by their names unless they are parents, say otherwise. Or as Navigate 360 says, oh, we just meant if someone wants you to use their abbreviated name like Missy instead of Melissa, that's what we meant. I don't know. And I think that I agree with letting it run the proper course, because we have given Dr. Cromer pretty good direction and had many conversations with where we're going. So I'm not against the program. But I do think that maybe taking a little bit more time to vet it might be the prudent process. And I appreciate you wanting to go through and list all these concerns. But I think that that's going to be a very hard task to look at. You know, out of this whole video, we had this one comment that we're really not sure about. Do we remove the whole lesson because of that? And then if we remove it, we have to come to the whole board to get it removed. It really just seems like a long process that I don't, I don't think is going to be efficient. So you know, I don't know if we need, if, if the board is leaning in that direction, if there needs to be some kind of amendment to it, or if voting this in, then we can give direction to do that. But I am okay with the program. I just think that the vetting needs to be done the proper way.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gelsinger, back to you.
So based on some of the concerns, Mr. Kump, and especially some of the stuff that Mr. Galzola brought up, what's your intention going forward with the current scope of sequence?
So it's my understanding that there is a major concern with lessons twenty-four and twenty-seven. So I would want the board to give me some direction with those specific lessons. Because I don't know if that's a collective whole, or if that's individuals with the board. I believe that's probably more likely to be a collective whole than those individual lessons. We, to some point, we have to put trust that we are going to use our school board policies, that there is clear direction in our policy in how we would be using those languages with our students. And it's the expectation that policy is followed, policy is law within our school. I do have some concerns about, okay, we have different board members with different views, and how do we control and vet all of those different views without having an actual vote of board?
So the follow-up would be, I'm sort of, I'm trying to get somebody to say that you're willing to go back and at least look at some of these lessons, because I'm pretty sure you haven't had a chance to vet every one of these lessons.
I have not had a chance to vet every one of the lessons, and I, I will not. I have to trust my teachers to help me in vetting them. So that's part of the point of a pilot is now it's not just one individual looking through a resource and vetting it and, and learning it, knowing what it is and what it has. You have a team that is looking at that together. You come together as, as a, as a staff, you have professional conversations around the lessons. This is something that we would be meeting ongoing to talk about the, how effective the lessons are. Are they appropriate to continue using with our children?
It's curriculum, the both.
If you were willing to look at twenty-four and twenty-seven and see that some of these things are very clearly stated, as Mr. Galzola pointed out, would you remove them immediately on your own? Or would you rely on your teachers to collaborate to remove them? Or would you rely on this board? Because I haven't looked at those specific lessons. I'm not going to lie, those lessons were a concern of mine. And they were a couple of lessons that were not made readily available. So it definitely made the hair on the back of my neck stand up. So as a board member voting on this tonight, without the ability to look at those lesson plans, I'm looking for some kind of reassurance that if I'm voting on this tonight, that we're not going to be right back where we were, putting in curriculum reviews or putting in book reviews. Where if you go back and you look at these lessons, and these things are clearly stated in there, are you willing to remove them as a principal of the school? Or are you going to rely on your staff?
If there are things that do not follow board policy, and I am aware of them, I will remove them.
So I'd just like to add a little bit to your, your comment about needing help and letting the teachers vet it. So first of all, I, I think that there has been a lot, not just on this, but a lot of comments that we don't trust our teachers and that we should allow, we should trust our teachers to, to vet this curriculum. But it's our job to vet curriculum. Okay? Going through this and looking at this the way we are is not because we don't trust our teachers, it's not their job, it's our job. That would be obfuscating our responsibility to say, here it is, you decide whether it's right or wrong. So I want to make sure that the, the teachers understand that this isn't, we're not looking at this deeply because we don't trust them to vet it. It's because it's our job to vet it. Now that being said, on a new pilot program like this, it is so big that you almost need to see it in action. And so if we are going to proceed with this, other than one or two programs that seem to be blatant, that I think we shouldn't have any problem removing, I think that you, I think you, you won't have any problem removing. We may have to distrust our teachers on this. Normally, I wouldn't say that. Normally, I say, listen, curriculum needs to be correct when it goes down. We shouldn't have gray areas. But because this is a pilot, there's going to be things in there that none of us are going to be able to find until it's actually put into action. And then we are going to have to trust them on that moment to go, we're not going to do this. That's going to require some specific direction from you. And unfortunately, just following board policy might not be good enough, because some of this stuff, again, is a little bit of a gray area. You know, under the stereotypes course, one of the things that they list is sexual orientation. And I know that's a protective class, but I don't think it's something we should be talking about in third grade. So we also shouldn't be stereotyping them. So that's where I have my concern, is that it's not just direct board policy that we're going to have to follow. There's going to have to be a lot of in-between that's going to be very hard for individual teachers and you to either bring up and, and actually make the decision whether or not this needs to stay or stay or go. That's the hard part.
Mr. Galzola.
To coalesce this, for me, it comes down to who's responsible for the program, right? Right now, you didn't write this, you're seeking a pilot. You're not responsible with the content, you're not responsible for what it teaches. I'm not about to hold you responsible for it. You're trying to find a resource. Going forward, if we just say, let the teachers implement it and let us know, who's responsible for when a socialist movement gets taught to the kids, like far left, far right, whatever you want to be? Who's responsible for that? Like, that's why we have a curriculum process. I think we're contravening the whole intent of a director of curriculum to properly vet stuff before it's, it's delivered in our schools. If we, if we just insert a pilot and say, let us know, I think we're Wild West in it. We have to have, so the question I would ask, if, if we went forward with this and we have our team look at it, because again, they're not responsible for, for what this is either. But we're putting our teachers in responsible for the curriculum being delivered? Like, is that what we want to do? Or do we want to put that where it belongs, which is our director of curriculum should be responsible for our curriculum? Because I'll tell you, this board member, if we're teaching something that I've clearly stated we should not be teaching, I'm going to want to know why they're not, they're not abiding, right? And I think that's administration. You, you stated it clearly, Dr. Cromer has, you know, we understand the board's intent. But you did state you want a clarity on if we're going to do these individual removals, what we're doing. And that's really the problem, right? Is how are you going to manage that as one building principal? Well, these, these said keep it, these said, that's not a process. That's why we have a curricular process. So I, I think, I think we should be following our process. And if we don't, we're, we're just shooting from the hip.
Can I ask Dr. Cromer a question? So in
Hoping someone
Yeah. Quite honestly, I'm sitting back there.
Talking about you for a while.
So sorry, that's on me.
You can take this wherever direction you want, but I'm going to ask you a direct question. I know that you're very busy and that you plan curriculum years in advance. But being that this is one lesson per week and a very small lesson, is there a possibility that you could weekly review what is going to be going over as a pilot, working in conjunction with, with Mr. Kump, to review prior to it going forward each week? And deliberate with him whether or not you feel it's appropriate? And if not, you just bump to the next week? I, I don't see it taking very long for you to review a ten-minute video and a three-page document once or twice a week to just try and get ahead of it.
So I would have to, so really, when I was here the other night, hearing the presentation, there was a lot of information that I was hearing for the first time. Because this doesn't, as Dr. Dalton said, doesn't typically fall under my purview because of policy and the way curriculum's written. I'm not arguing that it's not. But as I was sitting back there thinking, okay, what could we do somewhere into this? So the questions about the process, what does our process look like about the standards? And how do we go through this? What do we do with the pilot for academic things? What do we write down and do all those things? So we're kind of backwards in this, but one thing that I was thinking was what Mr. Beard had originally said about sort of putting this into a process and putting something to paper like our traditional, like our curriculum. Now I will say, in our curriculum process, I'm sorry, Mr. Ley, I'm going to get to your answer. But I've been dying to like, share this information, but I will get to that. But one thing that I do want to make clear is when the board, and I was trying to frantically look, maybe Dr. Dalton can help me out, on which policy and what the verbiage states on what curriculum, what is approved by the board.
One oh two, policy one oh two, academic standards.
That was the one. I didn't open up. I hit every other one that I wanted to read it. So I don't have it verbatim and exactly in there. But when we're looking at curriculum, it's not necessarily lesson plans that the board is approving. The curriculum, we're talking about standards. We're talking about this transfer goals, which are on that typical, that edutainment information I give you, knowledge, skills, all of those pieces, that is the curriculum. And in my mind, I think we can create that in an edutainment standard. The lesson plans, just like other resources that we use, they are offered to the board, sort of like in this same process to be able to look at. Again, we're, we're kind of on different sides of as we pilot and write at the same time. We look for those things, pull those out, and go through that process. So now, to answer your question, Mr. Ley, should we move forward with that? And if we look to write something, putting it, placing it in a process, it really doesn't fall under a policy, we're just making the decision at the direction of the board to say, hey, can we add this side in? Where it doesn't really fall in policy, we're just going to, because we believe this. Which is fine. If we move in that direction, I can easily put it in a process, it can go in a cycle. We can attempt to have something written like everything else by the summertime. Whatever we can do, in that, we would have to do what you're asking, Mr. Ley. So I'm coming back to your question. So if those two things are together, then yes, I would work, I would work with Mr. Kump. And, and really, because this side doesn't typically fall under the director of curriculum, even though I'm not arguing that it's not curriculum, because it's something that's offered to everyone that's standard, this side typically would fall under the director of people services. Probably sitting back there, I didn't think he was going to get called out. But I would
You're next.
rely on him to also support in that, because that does fall, not that I wouldn't do it, but I think we would all work together to try and do what you're asking or sort of stating as we go through the process. Did that answer your question?
So I think what you're saying is you would be happy to review some of these and develop the curriculum from it, maybe. As you're reviewing, you would, it would allow you a chance to build that curriculum throughout the year and then finalize it next summer.
That's what I think. And again, and I'm actually going to go on a statement that you said the other night after I commented, when I said something about standards and you commented that each lesson plan, I'm assuming that's, I'm assuming that's accurate. Each lesson plan already is connected to a standard. We can then, I think, maybe go back to some questions about not everything in Castle we all may believe in. This then pulls out and says, okay, not every Castle standard's in here. These are the standards that are in here. These are the knowledge and skills. We can go through all that, those things. Comes back in front of everyone. This is what we believe. And I just want to remind everyone, this is similar to our discussion before about textbooks that sometimes when we purchase these large textbooks, that sometime when we purchase these large textbooks, that doesn't mean that we are covering everything in that textbook. We're going to come back and, but we've decided as a board and approved that this section we're covering, this section we're covering. But even though we don't agree with that other section, we're not covering that other section. In the, in that case, can't turn it off, not have access because we're not talking about a digital thing. This, what it sounds like, you can turn that off from that piece. So it's, it's definitely not in there. And we can turn on the access of the lessons or whatever that connect to the standards, that connect to the knowledge, the skills and all of those things. So that was probably much longer than you expected, uh, for me. So I guess the short answer is we can do that. I don't know what it's going to look like when it gets to the summer, but I'm confident that we can produce something by the summertime. And then it does go into what our typical cycle is when we give you something to approve and we have a core resource. Here it is, here it is, and it's approved.
And so I believe it's going to roll out to every elementary. We should have
So the
more guidelines around it. So that would be
This would help guidelines, guardrails, whichever way you want to look at it. And should it go, and, and really that was the intent, that this was the pilot with the intention that it wasn't optional for other buildings, from my understanding, I'm sorry, Mr. Kump, if I'm incorrect, that we would then move forward with the other, at least four elementaries. Just reiterating, we're talking about elementary and we were not talking about no school or high school with any of this.
Dr. Cromer, I did not intend to talk past you. I was going to prompt you. Justin just beat me to it. I'm very glad you took
I figured I, I got a couple eyes back to me. I was like, okay, someone's got to call me up, so.
I, I'm sorry, we didn't call you sooner.
Yeah, no, that, no, that's okay. I mean, thinking about that, is that some, are there any other questions about that process or sort of putting in play?
I agree with you, Dr. Cromer. I think this is something that should go through a process. If we have to modify the normal curriculum process a bit.
Yeah.
I think that's okay, but I, I think it would be completely unfair for the board to expect Mr. Kump is the principal or West Mannheim teachers, you know, to make the subjective assessments about what should be kept or what should not. That, that's our job. That's the job of the board. And we should not abdicate that responsibility or try to offload it onto someone else.
And, and I guess I just want to reiterate, in the past, because of policy, things like this haven't occurred. We're just moving forward, if that's the direction we go, with a new norm or a new practice. So I certainly don't want it to feel that, and I don't think you do, I hope you don't, that Mr. Kump was doing something or anyone was going in a different direction. I think it's, it easily fits into this and we can move forward in this direction.
I, I do have one caveat, and I discussed it with Dr. Burkhart, and that is if we, i- if we open Pandora's box and have, uh, an insertion of a pilot program on one topic, then I can see other departments saying, well, I'm going to pilot something for English. I'm going to pilot something for math. And Dr. Bar- Burkhart very quickly said, any pilots need to be brought before the board for consideration. I, I think that's a, a very important distinction moving forward so that we have this process to follow. And, and maybe this is our opportunity to develop the process for how we adopt pilots, right?
Okay. So at this time, I would like a roll call vote for 10 C three.
Mr. Gelsinger.
No.
Mr. Gellizella.
No.
Mr. Ley.
With the caveat, the curriculum will be developed with a yes.
Mr. Plessig.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer.
No.
Mr. Beard.
No.
Mrs. Brennan.
Yes.
Mrs. Weaver.
Yes.
Five yes, four no.
So can I ask clarify, so we just passed this as adopted without any stipulations. They weren't on the agenda item. Is that correct?
We pa- that is my, as it was written.
Right, so there were no caveats placed on it.
It, it's passed as a pilot. That's what it states in the minutes.
At West Mannheim.
But there was no discussion then about whether or not it was going to be, that's why I voted the way I did, was that there needs to be something on this with curriculum about it. As, a- as was just discussed, discussed, that there needs to be an implementation plan.
Or you could possibly do that as administrative guidance.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I feel like the guidance was already kind of given.
Yeah, that's why, I just want to clarify. So I'm, I'm asking that the board further direct administratively that we develop a curriculum to implement this, this pilot program we just passed then at this time. And can I get a second on that suggestion to? So develop curricular guidance on how to to put in place the pilot program we just approved.
Can we vote on that tonight or does that have to be on the future agenda?
So it's guidance, but I want to make sure I'm understanding. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying because I don't think that I am. We just passed this as a pilot program at West Mannheim, which in my, in my mind is the green light to utilize the pilot at West Mannheim. I, what you just said sounded like you said no until curriculum is created. I, am I misunderstanding? Your guidance, it, it sounded like you said guidance to not use it until curriculum was
No, I said immediately develop a process to implement this pilot.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly. So for administrative guidance, there's, there's no vote because it's not a motion.
Oh, I mean, you got to get it
Just a general consensus. Does anyone disagree with Director Gellizella's suggestion to?
Dr. Cromer, yeah, Dr. Cromer's already, he's already, he and I had this discussion today. He's, that process is already beginning.
Right, I, I, and I'm not counter, I just wanted a clear direction from the board that we were seeking that. That's all, that's my intent.
Right, absolutely. Yep. All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kump, thank you very much for staying until eight ten. Please go home. You're, we appreciate you. Okay. Moving on. 10D Buildings, Grounds and Equipment Committee, Mr. Plessig, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion for 10D items one, two, three, four, and five.
Second.
They're all change orders that were discussed on Monday.
Motion for Mr. Plessig, second for Mr. Smith. Any comments?
Mr. Mr. Gellizella?
Yes.
Mr. Ley?
Yes.
Mr. Plessig?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mrs. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gelsinger? Mrs. Weaver?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Sorry about that. Student and Community Relations Committee, Mr. Ley, 10E.
Um, being that these are somewhat different, would anybody like either of these broken apart? Okay, I propose, um, 10E one and two.
Second. Motion from Mr. Ley, second from Mrs. Bauer.
And these are trips on, um, Sundays, ones in a way trip for the, uh, student council, uh, which looks to be a great trip, and I know that they've benefited from in the past. And the other one is some cheerleading competitions are on Sunday. There are one-day events and they will be getting transportation here from the school.
Thank you, sir. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ley?
Yes.
Mr. Plessig?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mrs. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gelsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Gellizella?
Yes.
Mrs. Weaver?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Thank you. Policy Committee, 10F.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Um, related to Policy Committee, uh, we had a vicarious debate related to several policies. They are currently being, uh, edited to final format coming out of committee by Dr. Dalton. Um, they're not quite edited to full capacity yet, so they will be going on the next meeting. They will include everything that was listed on the Policy Committee with the additional, um, piece that, uh, coming out of committee, we discussed adding an administrative directive to political displays outside of eight seventy, which was flag displays. That will be landing in Policy three twenty-one unless I get guidance from Dr. Dalton. Is there a better place to discuss, uh, defining what a political display is?
I would have to look into, I don't, I would, I didn't, um, because I don't remember necessarily being, I don't, I'm not debating it, but so the directive would be, okay, you had talked about political speech, the three twenty
Yes, I, I sent you something briefly, maybe you haven't seen it yet.
Oh, okay, maybe I didn't see.
Three, i- it basically clarification on how to define political displays under three twenty-one.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll add that to the Policy Committee when it comes up for next meeting.
Sure.
I have the form here, I brought it in, uh, so if anyone wants to view that ahead of it going out in email, by all means.
Thank you, sir. Mental Health and Wellness Committee, Ms. Brennan.
No report. Um, I am looking forward to, uh, going to the peer support group training on Friday. I'm actually very much looking forward to that, so.
Thank you for taking time to do that. Negotiations Committee, Mr. Gelsinger.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, sir. Safety Committee, back to Mr. Gellizella.
Uh, nothing beyond my prior in that, um, Dr. Smale is still actively working on developing and expanding that. Do you have anything to add to that or is, we've, we've covered the majority of it? Okay. Okay. So the next meeting will have the EOP and supplemental guides, okay? Thank you.
Um, this brings us to J, Other Matters for Board Consideration and/or Action. Does anyone have anything this evening? Okay. Um, eleven, proposed September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five agenda items.
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay, and I see that there's voting for the PSBA officers, um, added and listed on the agenda. So that will be in, at the second meeting in September.
There was an attachment to the agenda manager with that information on there.
To review the candidates ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I get clarification on who nominates those candidates?
I believe it's PSBA, um, a- at the state level. I, I, I can find out, but I
Is it an elected official who nominates them or is it an assigned official from the governor?
I feel like I saw an email that asked us as members to suggest people.
It, it's from the membership.
Yeah, it was like, do you know
PSBA, like all board members, like you would
I think that's the first round of vetting, but the ones that get sent to us. Who selects the one, like if we submitted every one of our names, would our names be on that email? Or is there a committee at PSBA?
There is a committee, I'm pretty sure there's a committee at PSBA because they have a board.
They choose who goes on the ballot. That's what I would like clarification.
And there's one person for every position. It's really not voting.
Correct. It's a committee who has already done the voting for us as it appears, and they are not. These are assumptions, these are
I looked it up if you
Are they elected officials or are they assigned representatives?
Well, they should. Typically, the number of officials you vote for exceeds the number of slots available. So then didn't have enough people nominated, that's why. Yeah, it's a joke.
Keith, I could, uh, ChatGPT, information in your pocket, gotta love it. According to Article five, section four of PSBA bylaws, there's a nominating committee specifically tasked with preparing a slate of candidates for officer and other elected positions of the association. And it's comprised, comprised of immediate past president, president-elect, one select sectional advisor, one individual member, two current members, two past presidents, and two school board directors.
They, they choose who they send us to nominate.
That's correct.
One for each seat.
Chip, it's been my, I, I believe there's been more, maybe not this case, but I thought in the past, there's been more candidates than there were seats.
That they're having, yeah. In the past, they're having, talking years ago, there have been. But I think recently it's been one for one. And I was, I was told that we can, the, the board, when you vote, you could vote to abstain and not, not vote for a candidate.
That's one of the questions.
I think actually when you look at the ballot, it has that on or the candidate's name and then the other option is abstain.
So they still win, they just get less votes.
Correct.
So really, it's not a vote.
Right.
They're voting for us is basically what I'm trying to drive at here.
And they want you, they want you then to underwrite it or validate what they already
Join in or get left behind.
Show up to poll those votes that people
So that's on for September twenty-fourth. Sounds like you guys are really excited about it.
There will not be that much of a discussion, I promise.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, um, I would like to ask that, uh, Dr. Winters, if you would be willing to ask some of your sixth grade students who went on a, uh, board-approved field trip this past weekend, we'll be doing it, I believe, next week as well, if any of them would like to come to the September twenty-fourth meeting to, um, present on their field trip or tell us a little bit about it. Oh, just kidding, it's coming October tenth. Sorry. That's good, more time to prepare. Okay. This brings us to number tw- oh, sorry, number twelve, planning a discussion. Anything this evening? Um, this brings us to our second visitors' section. I have one visitor who has signed in to speak, and then if anyone else would like to address, uh, Ms. Denise Bunty.
Denise Bunty in, um, Penn Township. Um, I would like to pray, dear Lord, as we go into the year, may our board members and administration seek your wisdom to do your will. We thank you, uh, you, Lord, for the football players from New Oxford and Southwest as showing their faith and praying together. We ask that you be with the school in Colorado with the shooting, Lord. We thank you for Trump wanting to do, to put the Bible and prayer back into school. Lord, please play, pray for Charlie Kurt's family. He is now with you. We pray for this country and the evil things that occur in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other visitors at this time that would like to address the board? Seeing no one rising to the mic, this brings us to number fourteen, for the good of the order.
I'd just like to give my annual reminder that next Wednesday, the seventeenth, is Constitution and Citizenship Day.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would just like to point out that we are often chided, even by our own members and my wife, that we discuss things way too much. But I would challenge that by saying that we had an extremely productive discussion tonight about the curriculum part of Navigate three sixty. And I think that discussion actually went places that none of us expected. And I believe we came up with a very good resolution to, uh, an extremely difficult problem uh, by continuing until we found a, a good solution from many different aspects of the program and many different um, perspectives of board members. And so I just want to say that I, I appreciate all of your dialogue and the, uh, the results that come to uh, this board because of it.
I have one thing to add.
Yes, sir.
If I could, just a thank you to, uh, the CBS twenty-one Andrew Klein reporter, who came early Friday morning to our students who showed up, our marching band members, our teachers, our administrators. And again, uh, for CBS twenty-one highlighting all the positive things that happen here in our school. Um, that doesn't happen too often, but when it does, we take advantage of it, not CBS twenty-one, but in general. And just again, a really heartfelt thank you. And they've reached out to talk about additional stories about the great things that happen here. So I look forward to more of those coming in our direction. And I couldn't start with, I couldn't stop without a call out to Dr. Winters for his exceptional cartwheel and toe touch. Thank you.
Of course. Um, just to piggyback on what Dr. Burkhart just said, um, if you do not follow the southwestern high school social pages, this week, they showcased all of the young women that are running for homecoming court this year. Um, and reading through, the chi- the children were asked to answer a litany of questions, um, pertaining to themselves and, and how they feel they represent Southwest and taking the time represent Southwest and taking the time to read the ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade responses. It truly just goes to show that the children absolutely understand what it means to be a Mustang. And there wasn't a single write up that you were like, well, that's going to be the one because they were all really, really good. Um, and I'm I am so excited for these these young people. Some of them, I'm sure, went out of their comfort zones to do it and I'm sure homecoming will be a beautiful night. But um just to bring more of that joy and that passion that is Southwest, these these kids are the the best of the best. Um, and also, we did have a local soccer, uh, one of our soccer players this week, um, one of our female soccer players netted her hundredth career goal. And as a soccer player myself, not that good of a soccer player, that is so impressive. And it just again goes to show that we excel in academics as well as athletics. And it is such a wonderful pride to be part of this district. Um, and I wish that young woman absolute success and I expect to see her in the Olympics at some point. So um just very proud of our students and what they do to represent this district.
Yeah, I debated whether to do this, but um I I really am moved to the prompt from Mr. Leidy related to debate. I I think it goes about saying that we are a board of debate and to have seen the horrific assassination of one of the champions of open debate. Um, it struck me to the core. I'm truly devastated that free speech on our campus was literally assassinated. And uh I think that it's an incredible teaching moment that people should take and uh talk to your kids and huddle.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at eight twenty four PM. Thank you all.